I'd like to call to meeting for Thursday, May 25th, 2023. We'll start with a prayer by Member Phillips, after which I'll ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Father. Thank you so much for bringing us together today. Please guide us in our decisions and questions and our duties. Please help us to stay clear and focused. Say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Destin Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Declarations or any conflicts of interest with any items on the agenda for the commission tonight? Seeing none. We'll move on to public comment time. We have one administrative item on our agenda. It's the Monti Verde subdivision number one amendment. If you wish to speak on that, now will be your time to speak on it. Since it is administrative, we will not have a public hearing on it. So if you have a comment on that, now would be your time. We have two legislative items, Val Paul Land use text amendment and planned community zone text amendment. We will have public hearings on those at the time on the agenda. And so you can wait for your comments on those items till then. So now we'll open up the public comment. If anyone in the audience has anything or any other item you wish to address with the planning commission. Seeing none, we will move on to item number six, Monti Verde subdivision number one amendment.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. Item number six on tonight's agenda is for application number 23.018. This is for a proposed plat amendment affecting three lots in the area known as the Monti Verde subdivision, consisting of 1.5 acres and is identified by the parcel numbers and serial numbers located in your staff report and is located approximately at 6137 West Valley View Drive in Tom Green. Staff is recommending that this item be continued until such a time that the applicant goes through the street vacation process based on state statute. This is regarding the 10-foot right-of-way just to the east of the applicant's property, or under Mr. Clark's property. We're asking it to just be continued, not to adate certain because it's uncertain how long that process will take with the state. If the applicant wishes to move forward with the item tonight, then staff will recommend denial because staff has found no proof that the county ever vacated that 10-foot right-of-way. We have a deed that's in your staff report that shows the land being deeded over to Mr. Clark. Unfortunately, we were unable to determine if the land was legally able to be deeded over to Mr. Clark. If you have questions about that, again, we'll continue our review on that. We have a county attorney here with tonight for questions about that. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Or the county attorney? Is the applicant here? Do you wish to speak? Okay. So it's recommended that we continue? How do we not adate certain?
Just make the motion to continue as staff will renotice it in the future.
So it will be renoticed? Okay.
And it will, I mean, there's some portions of the state code that require noticing the vacation as well. And so there will be multiple notices that go out. And just to clarify, it's actually not up to the state. It will be up to the county commission to vacate that, but it's pursuant to the state code. Do you want me to give a little more background on why?
Sure.
Okay. So initially, the applicant sent a letter to the county, to the commission, and to me. And they were requesting that this 10-foot right-of-way be vacated. I met with Cindy, I believe, shortly after that to discuss the letter. And I gave her a copy of Utah Code 1727A 609.5. And so that one, it describes the process for a petition to vacate a public street. And, well, before I go there, I showed her two codes. So the other one I gave was 609. So 609, 609.5, under 17-278. And here's where staff is recommending postponement because 609 subsection 1 says, "The land use authority may approve the vacation or amendment of a plat by signing an amended plat showing the vacation or amendment if the land use authority finds these two things. One, there is good cause for the vacation or amendment, and no public street or county utility easement has been vacated or amended." And so if we weren't dealing with a street, then it could happen through the process that they've submitted. However, because it does involve a public street, the Utah Code prohibits that being done through a vacation or amendment of a plat. So then it goes to the 609.5. And under subsection 2, it says, "A petition to vacate some or all of a public street or county utility easement shall include..." And this is what was missing from the letter. It says, "The name and address of each owner of record of land that is adjacent to the public street or county utility easement between the two nearest public street intersections or access exclusively by or within 300 feet of the public street or county utility easement." The letter, and I understand that they wanted it to be characterized as a petition, but it was missing that element, and so it was incomplete. And that's why I gave a copy to Cindy when she came in. The second thing required is proof of written notice to operators of utilities and culinary, water, sanitary sewer facilities located within the bounds of a public street or county utility easement sought to be vacated. Staff doesn't believe that there are any, so technically that wouldn't be required. And then the last one is the signature of each owner under such section 2A who consents to the vacation. And it did have the signature of Jap, who would be one of the owners, but 2A was incomplete. And so that's why it wasn't enough to move the petition beyond that point. But once that's received by the applicant, then the petition will be submitted to the legislative body. And at that point, they can adopt an ordinance granting the petition to vacate. But that will have to be noticed, a public hearing, and go through that process. So I know the applicant submitted documents showing that they own that or that it's been deeded to them. The problem is, when we went back further, there's never been a vacation of that. And back in 1969, when the Monti Verde subdivision number one was recorded, it designates this property there as a 10-foot right-of-way. And the owner's dedication says, quote, "The undersigned owners further hereby dedicate, grant, and convey to Morgan County all those parts or portions of said tract of land designated on said plat as streets, the same to be used as public thoroughfares forever." And so until that changes, if they dedicated it to the county until it's vacated, it has to remain a public thoroughfare forever. And there would be liability on the county if we allowed an amendment to go forward without vacating it because there's other property owners that would not have the ability to speak to the vacation itself. And so, anyway, I hope that that kind of gives the background of why it's here, why they thought maybe they could still move forward because they found a deed that shows a meets and bounds description that was transferred to them. However, just because it's been transferred to them doesn't mean the person who transferred it had ownership to transfer. And so until the county vacates it, we're recommending that it's postponed or denied.
Can I speak to the issue?
No, the time is gone for that. We had a public comment period earlier.
So, yeah.
So it's listed as a public street?
Yeah, a right-of-way is a street.
Public right-of-way.
Yeah, public right-of-way.
Has it ever been used as a right-of-way?
Not, I don't know that. I think that Josh may have some insight from public works a little bit. But it doesn't matter whether it's used as a right-of-way. Until it's vacated, it has been, let's see. And so, okay, the right-of-way was conveyed to Morgan County to be used as a public thoroughfare forever. And so there's, you know, a forever element of that thoroughfare until it's vacated. And at that point, it could, you know, it could be moved forward potentially. But that would be a decision for the county commission based upon your recommendation.
Does vacating that impact any of the other landowners?
Well, I believe some that are here would probably speak that it does. And although it's past the time for public comment, there will be time for public comment if it goes, you know, through the vacation process and then back renoticed for the plat amendment process. So there will be multiple times for the other owners to speak. But for purposes here, where we're at, is there has not been a sufficient petition submitted to vacate. And so we're still waiting on the applicant to do that before we can even put it before the county legislative body.
And the public will have ample time, especially during the vacation process.
Processes.
Yeah.
They'll have plenty of notice and multiple opportunities to speak to the issue. I'll forward it to you. I'll just forward this email I sent earlier today.
Okay. Any more questions for the county attorney or for staff? Do we have a choice of recommending denial or to postpone this item until the county vacates the 10-foot right-of-way?
Do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion.
So I can make a shot.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I make the motion that we postpone this item until the issues as outlined by the county attorney have been addressed. And the appointment of the day issued by the professional staff will indicate when we're going to talk about it again. It's a really convoluted statement, so.
It'll be renoticed again till they renotice it. Okay. I have a motion by Member Wilton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Miller. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Cindy, can I get your email? I guess you're not on.
Okay, we're on to item number seven, Val Paul Land use text amendment.
This item is file number 23.013. It's a text amendment for the creation of a live-work dwelling unit opportunity within our zoning ordinance. The planning commission heard this item back in April, I believe, recommended denial. Went to the county commission. The county commission felt that it was a good idea, but they had some concerns, some items that they wanted the planning commission to weigh in on, so they re-manded it back to the planning commission. Those items were in the bullet points of your staff report. After the county commission meeting, staff met with Val Paul, and we went through the bullet points. Val Paul is the applicant. We went through the bullet points generated by the county commission, and we updated the text for most of those bullet points to give you an option of how it could read and the changes to the land use table. The first bullet point was, "Should the owner be required to occupy one of the units or would employees occupy the units with the owner present at the business to provide oversight of the live-work dwelling unit?" We propose the language that is drafted in number six of Exhibit B. Exhibit B. So you have two copies of the text. The first text, first copy of the text is what you originally saw, which allowed it permitted in all the commercial zones. We have since modified that. And the second proposed text with the modifications is after that, the first exhibit. So we modified the language of six to read, "At the time of land, live-work dwelling unit approval, the applicant shall demonstrate that the property on which the dwellings are proposed contains a viable business operation or will at the time of development completion. The property owner shall occupy a portion of the business structure. Employees or owner may occupy the residential area above or behind the primary business structure." So we tried to address that and give you some optional language to go with. The second items, the second and third bullet points that talked about what zone should it be permitted in and should it be permitted outright or conditionally used permit. We modified the land use table as an example to be conditionally used three, a C3 in commercial buffer, a commercial, conditionally used permit one in neighborhood commercial, a C3 conditionally used permit in the shopping center, and then permitted outright in commercial heavy and general commercial. The next, "Should the enforcement options be added?" I added sample nuisance language that are at the end of the text amendment as C nuisance with four bullet points there with references to our code. And then the last one, "Should CCNRs be required?" That was actually already in the text, and so we left that text as it was, deleting out the option to kind of minimize, and that's found in item number nine. If you have any questions or if you want to go through the six bullet points, the county commission requested some additional information from the planning commission. Go with that now.
Any questions for the staff at the moment? If you want, we can go through the bullet points that the county commission has asked us to address. Okay, make some recommendations. So the first one, "Should the owner be required to occupy..." Well, before we go, here's another one, one of the units. Do we agree that two units should be allowed per business? We had talked one before in our last discussion before we recommended denial. Let's have that discussion. How many units do you think is appropriate?
I remember it being one.
Yeah, we discussed one.
That's what we discussed, yeah.
We recommended one. Or again, before we made denial, but we talked about one.
Do we know why, what's the reasoning behind two if it's for an owner of a business?
To give them some rental opportunity as well, to provide some additional opportunities in the area for residential dwelling, which is why we proposed two in our discussion with Mr. Paul.
Yeah, I think we discussed if it was a live-work, then it's kind of where the owner would live there, where they work.
I mean, if you did two, could you have, can you have a requirement that it be an employee?
Those are both.
Well, that. Yeah, so we changed the language to require the employees of the business to occupy. That's on number six of the second text amendment, that the property owner would occupy a portion of the business and that an employee could occupy the rental unit. If you want to remove two dwelling units and move it down to one, you can change that and you can move that as a recommendation forward.
Take preference?
So this is my pet peeve, and I always avoid it, but how are we going to enforce it?
That's one of the bullet points.
Well, it just says, "At the time of completion," right? So basically, they show it once, and then you never have to show anything again. Is that how, is that how I understand it?
No, so the enforcement comes with the creation of the deed restrictions and the CCNRs. And so when, if a business leaves and they come in and they want to get a new business license, like the new owner wants to get a new business license, and there's a live-work situation above, then they have to address that at the time that they come in for the business license.
So my concern more is the first one that does it. That doesn't really have an employee or than that, and so he's got a vacant spot that he wants to rent and not making any money. And so he lets someone off the street that he knows rent it. And how are we going to know that that person works for him? How are we going to regulate it and make sure that it's all up front?
It would be regulated through the business licensing portion of it and when they go through the construction property, the construction of the development. So when they construct it, if they're going to do live work, then they're going to have to create HOA, CCNRs, the deed restriction. That means that the upstairs has to be occupied by either the owner or the employee based on number six. If they sell the business and somebody else comes and buys it, then either the owner has to occupy it or an employee. And if that's not the case, then I guess they'll be using it for storage.
And I guess that's my thing, though, is knowing who's there so that.
Yeah, how do you know that it is an employee?
Or that they start out with an employee and that employee moves. You know, the next week is gone, and all of a sudden, now we got Jill Blow off the street. It's.
Well, when we receive a complaint, we can follow the code requirements for following up on code complaints, sending a notice of letter of compliance, a courtesy letter first, and then a notice of compliance second. And if they still don't come into compliance, then the county attorney takes over and becomes a class B misdemeanor or a fine of $100 per day for every day that the offense continues.
But the county doesn't enforce CCNRs and HOA?
We don't enforce CCNRs or HOAs, but we do enforce our zoning ordinance. So if zoning ordinance has the live-work dwelling unit requirement, and the owner or an employee has to occupy the apartment and they rent it out to somebody else and they are in violation of the zoning, not just their CCNRs. So at that point, I can pursue enforcement options in conjunction with the county attorney.
There's four there's four options of penalties within our code, and you can only choose one. And so there is the criminal penalty, which would come through the county attorney. Civil penalty, I guess that would also come through the county attorney, just not through the criminal system. And that's where the fines come. There is third-party enforcement. And then there's also the ability for the building co-official to write, you know, tickets and so forth. So there are four ways to enforce at the county. Based on each situation, we determine how to enforce that. Business licenses are renewed once a year. And so I don't know if there's something that could be put in there as part of the business license renewal so it wouldn't be, you know, they're in for a month and then someone else is in. It'd be an annual kind of check on that to provide a little more enforcement or oversight. But that was the only other thought that came to my mind, since we do it anyway. And every business license renewal goes through clerk's office, treasurer's office, the planning office, the assessor's office, sheriff's office, and the county attorney's office.
And there's text already with that, Garrett?
Text on.
On what you were just saying, that each business license renewal, they'll have to show.
No, that's not currently, because we don't have, to my knowledge, any live-work situations.
Is that something we can add in?
Yeah, we can modify item number six, which discusses that and states that they have to reaffirm at business license renewal each year.
I think if, it might have, that kind of solved that, right? If every time they're renewing their business license, you're having to show who's renting or who your tenants are and that they're employees, that makes that pretty simple.
That would help us to continue to enforce it on an ongoing basis. But on a complaint basis, if we get a complaint that somebody is renting that that isn't part of the business, then we can pursue other legal methods that are already in the code.
Would you say that's heavy-handed?
Well, I don't know. Do you think breaking the law and going against the...
Well, I'm just saying, is that asking too much to put that in and say, hey, every time you get a business renewal, just show it's being used for your employees?
I don't think that would be heavy-handed. I think since we don't have a staff, if we were to take active enforcement right now, I think that would be seen as heavy-handed and discriminatory because we're not actively enforcing everybody. But if we receive complaints and we enforce based on complaint, then that's a different story.
I think I wouldn't. It would help me feel better about, if they want the two, if it winds up making it so that it's tied to their business license renewal. I'm assuming that the businesses are going to wind up using that as incentive for employment, right? Makes it easy. One of the biggest struggles that Morgan County has is getting people to work. So if you can use that as incentive to get employees, that makes sense on being able to have that incentive to get employment, which is so difficult for all of these restaurants that we've seen. If that were tied into the business license renewal, then it doesn't burden the county really with having to seek out complaints and, or wait for complaints to come. And then you have an ongoing oversight. If that were added in, I would feel good about it.
One question. When the, because we talked about doing just one room or one place where they could occupy. Did the county commission request to put two back in, or was that just because that was in the original language?
Well, your recommendation wasn't to take it out. Your recommendation was a plat amendment.
No, I was saying, when we discussed it, sorry.
Right, so you discussed it, but your recommendation wasn't to take that out. Your recommendation was, we recommend denial. So that's what I took hold. So what the county commission saw is the text that was proposed to you, and I presented it with the understanding that the planning commission recommended denial outright. The county commission at the time said that they actually thought it was a good idea and that there were a few items they wanted the planning commission to address and comment on before bringing it back to them.
So if I were to do that, there wasn't much discussion between one versus two within the county, or county commission?
There wasn't.
There wasn't any.
Because they weren't aware. Because they weren't aware necessarily of the discussion, because it didn't come as part of.
No, and I get that.
I've already denied it, we could have said that.
And the code allows them to just kind of move it forward, but they wanted your input. If they said, well, you recommended denial, we think it could be a good idea, but there's some ambiguity and we want the planning commission to give a recommendation. If, of, if we're planning to pass something, we want their input on what restrictions or changes to what was presented.
And that makes sense. I just didn't know, in the course of their conversation, if it, it came up in general. I understand.
I don't think it did.
Okay.
I don't remember.
Can I ask a couple of questions really quick? I just, I'm curious, I should know this and I don't, I'm supposed to be ignorant. Are we talking like buildings where the residences' stairways would come down inside the business or would it be us? I guess it would vary.
No, there, there would be separate access. That's, that's the proposal.
I, in answer to Shin's question, I would think if, if I owned it, I would make sure there was certain people that had access to that business. Like, if you lived above it, it would be a problem in my opinion if you didn't want them in your business. Does that make sense to you or?
So you'd make sure that they were employees, yeah?
Well, I'm saying if I owned the business, I wouldn't want just anyone in that.
No, that makes sense, I agree there.
But if you had outside access, if you just wanted to rent it out, you could, right?
That's what I was curious, yeah, I agree.
So are we, are we still, are we okay with two?
We're okay with two if it's tied to the business license renewal, because then every year it's going to, and that's typically what your lease terms are going to be anyway.
Are you okay with two if it's one, if they're both tied to the business?
One have to be the owner, two, or?
So is it one owner, one employee, both employees, or can you just rent it out? Does that make sense?
I think as long as it's employees or an owner, what's the, like, I don't see a huge difference there. As long as they're tied to the business, from my perspective. I can't see the need to provide incentive other than just wages. It's hard to get employees right now. Uh, being able to use that, I can see that being in a.
The only problem, I see with that is you've still got the same thing, is that who's ever got in the business and not going to be paying for someone to live. So they're still going to have to pay their end.
Yeah, they can modify it. I'm sure that they give sweetheart deals for rent. Who knows? But if it's tied to their, if there's tenants in there and it's tied to the business license, then they're probably not just going to be bringing in outside people.
If, if it was, that's why I'm curious about the entrance. If you made the entrance go through their business, that kind of ties the owner to responsible behavior. If you allow them to just go outside and access the apartment without going, I don't know if you can do that.
Not sure that'd be allowed based on the legal requirements.
So if the owner was required to stay there, that would be someone to watch dog on what they're doing.
So I'm hearing both. Do we want, if we do two, do we want the owner with one employee or two employees? Possibility.
I'd like to hear from the applicant on what, how they see that, understand their position on.
Did you want to do that now, or do you want to go through all the bullet points with me and then talk to the?
Well, we can do that after we go through the bullet points.
Okay.
So, do we have a decision on this, a preference?
Debbie, does it make more sense to talk to them about that now?
Well, I mean, it affects the whole county, so it doesn't matter, it's just not for him, so.
I'm just trying to get an understanding of where they're coming from on that position?
On, on this, this one? Okay, yeah, Bill?
Yeah, so, um, so the concept, and we'll just put it as an example, as a veterinary hospital, it's hard to attract certified veterinary technicians or doctors that are outside of the county. They can work anywhere in Ogden, and so if we can get them to come here and have a place to, to live while they're working, and I can get some real skilled labor on site. When I was in another location, you're correct, we said, hey, here's an incentive for you to stay on site, we'll give you a rental discount because you're looking after the animals after hours. That's good patient care, that's good for our business, that's good for you, it's a triple win. And so our preference is, is that the owner occupies some part of that primary structure. And, you know, that day-to-day, you know, part of the business operation, the vet hospital, for instance, is going to give the oversight that we all want. Then I could have two technicians upstairs that they could live there, and then they could split that shift or whatever other live-to-work environment you might have. But I wouldn't really want to tie it, I mean, the owner has to be in one of them because the oversight's going to come in the business, in the day-to-day business, and that takes away one of the opportunities for me to have some employees there. So I'd prefer to say owner occupy the primary structure, they have the opportunity to live in one of the units if they want to. For some of the younger doctors that have, you know, $240,000 of school debt, that's a good spot for, you know, to be where they're first getting going, and a technician can be there and that can be the after-hours crew, so. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay, owner occupy the primary structure. Explain that, so the owner of the business or the owner of the building must?
Yeah, that, yeah, that primary structure, because you might have, hey, here's three different businesses in this flex space. So the vet hospital, if you can't have some absentee owner, that owner is working there on a day-to-day basis.
The owner of the building, not the business, the owner of the building.
Well, every flex space unit's going to have.
The condo, yeah.
Its own tax ID. So the owner of every tax ID, which is the business, which is that structure, has a primary, you know, they occupy that on a day-to-day basis.
They're running their business.
Yeah, they're running their business there. And then they can have to live to work upstairs or behind with an employee, or if they want to use one of them, or that's, that's fine too. Gives ultimate flexibility, attracts a lot of different businesses here that otherwise might not do it, so.
But I don't see that in here.
I think it was number six, that the owner occupies a portion of the primary structure or owner and employee could live in a live-to-work.
The property owner shall occupy.
That's what I'd say. If it says may, doesn't it mean that it doesn't have to?
Yeah, the employee owner may, yeah, we need to change that.
That's the live-to-work.
But that's the, that's the part.
That's one of the dwelling units.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, but it's still saying.
I'm saying if, if we're.
You can't leave may, I'm right.
No, go ahead.
No, you're right.
I was just saying, if you were trying to tie it, that has to either be the owner and then, or the employee, you would take out the may and you'd put a shall, because then it would require that whoever is there is an employee or an owner. Right now, when it just says may, it doesn't really matter.
It doesn't matter.
Well, I think that the, they, they have to occupy a portion of the primary structure. So if you say the owner shall occupy a portion of the primary structure, the may part is the owner may choose to live in one of the units or they may not, but they have to be, it, it has to be an employee to dwell in that.
It doesn't, that's not what it says, though.
Yeah, but that's, if we need to modify it, then that's.
It should say shall.
Right. It could say employees or owner shall occupy.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Big difference between shall and may.
Is that good on that bullet point?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So are you clear, Josh, on what we're seeing?
So the second bullet point was addressing what zones it should be allowed in, and at the same time, whether it should be outright permitted with a P or if it should be allowed with a conditional use permit?
Okay, I was having a discussion with Josh. Commercial buffer would, right now, like over by the airport, that little commercial development there, that's commercial buffer. Should you be allowing live-work? To me, that's kind of an industrial feel, or?
It's kind of morphed into that?
It morphed, it wasn't, it was supposed to be a buffer when it, between residential and.
It's industrial.
Commercial, but it, it's industrial, yeah, it's, doesn't buffer anything.
So I modified it to be a C3 conditional use permit, so they would go through planning commission and county commission, but if you want to remove it completely?
It would still be allowed. Do you think that's an appropriate place?
I think it's an appropriate place in a buffer zone, where it's in between residential and commercial.
Yeah, except the one buffer we have is more industrial, but.
Yeah.
Is there any other instances of that, or commercial buffer in the county?
Well, whether there are now or not, there could be.
There could be.
No, I understand, I was just trying to get an idea of what it, what it, looking qualified as a commercial buffer.
There's one in Peterson, I think the machine shop next to Heinz.
I think you're right.
Peterson Machine is commercial buffer.
It is?
No.
I thought we struggled on what we did with that one.
We, we struggled, but Heinz is commercial highway.
Yeah, Heinz is commercial highway.
But I think the Peterson's machine. Yeah, but I think it's commercial buffer. So that, in there, it would probably be appropriate.
Could you give me some examples again, just about what's allowed, like in a commercial heavy?
That's commercial highway.
Commercial highway?
Can you bring up the list of uses?
Yeah, can you go off, do all of them, just by help?
Yeah.
I'm sure there's a long list, but I just wanted to see some examples of some of them.
Yeah, we'll bring that up.
Of the uses?
Of the uses.
Okay. And like I say, Heinz is commercial highway, there's commercial highway, I think the old Now Care building where?
By the church.
By the church is commercial highway. I think maybe, yeah, there's what, there's commercial highway down. I think the Phoenix House might be commercial highway, I'm not sure.
Isn't the?
Right here, we're just going to go through the list really quick. So in a combination of food services.
Who?
Taggards, did someone live above Taggards?
I'm pretty sure they have a.
Does someone live above Taggards? I don't know.
Are you making a complaint?
He's asking a question.
I was asking how many different areas in the county have them.
I think we all would.
So our use table is split up into different general categories. The first general category is accommodation and food service. It also goes through residential, manufacturing, and various other things. We can just scroll through it if you want. So the food services, like hotels, restaurants, those are permitted or outright permitted or conditional use permit, depending on, you know, what kind of an impact they would generate. In most of the commercial zones, there's a couple like commercial buffer and neighborhood commercial, you can't do a health spa or a caterer. Hotels aren't allowed in neighborhood commercials, but they're allowed either permitted or with conditional use permit outright in all of the zone, all the commercial zones. If you want to go down, agriculture is permitted in all zones. Agriculture industry is only allowed in commercial buffer with a C2. Dairy processing is allowed in the C1, is in CB with a C1. Keep going. Public cemeteries are allowed everywhere. Mostly. No construction, except for in the town center zone, you can have a general contractor's office as an outright permitted, which is really odd to me. I don't know why that would be allowed.
But we're not allowing this in town center because town center already has mixed use, so this isn't an allowed use.
Yeah.
But my question was with the town center then, with this ordinance, would it control what goes in the town center, or is that?
No, not at all, because the town center is already allowed to do mixed use, commercial and residential, and we regulate town center with a development agreement, plus there's design criteria that they have to comply with. And so if somebody were to rezone the town center, then they would go through a development agreement process, which is also legislative as far as I can tell, which would come to planning commission and county commission to define the entitlements.
Okay.
So if they wanted to do live-work right now, and they have town center zoning, they could amend their development agreement to allow it and completely define it right now, they don't, they don't need this section. So that's why the county commission said, take it out of town center. That was the one thing they did tell us, tell me to do.
Okay.
Uh, if you go down, education services are outright permitted in all zones, except for life manufacturing, industrial. Entertainment, um, most of those are allowed in most of the general, or the commercial zones. There's some things that aren't allowed in neighborhood or commercial buffer, like museums, pension clubs, drive-in motion pictures, indoor play areas, family fun centers, pinball arcades. I don't know why that's not allowed in the neighborhood. Got to help the kids, right?
Yep.
Video game arcades, that should be allowed everywhere, but it's not. Uh, finance institutions, they're outright permitted everywhere, even in life manufacturing, industrial with conditional use permit. The manufacturing portions of it, they're outright prohibited in all the commercial, except for when you get down to electronic markets, durable goods, and non-durable goods. I would imagine those are defined in our code. All of the manufacturing other than that are required to be in life manufacturing and industrial, you keep going. Uh, office, um, there's automobile rental, I mean, it varies in impact. Some are outright permitted everywhere, some require conditional use permit, but for the most part, most of those uses are allowed throughout all the commercial zones. The residential, recreational vehicle parks and residential care facilities are allowed with C1 in most of the commercial districts. Residential units as part of a mixed use are outright permitted in town center, and then retirement homes are allowed in neighborhood commercial and commercial highway with a conditional use permit. Then you have your retail and different things. The automobiles are pushed off into commercial shopping and commercial highway as well as general commercial. You keep going. The recreation, go back up, recreational vehicle dealers are allowed with conditional use permit in, in behalf of the commercial zones.
Sorry, can you help me? I know you went through it. What's the difference between commercial buffer and neighborhood commercial? Without having to go through all of it, I just.
It's fine, those, the, the commercial buffer was, I think, designed to be the zone in between residential and the industrial, because if you look at our zoning map, there's a huge area of light manufacturing. There's probably more area for light manufacturing than Mountain Green has for commercial designated right now. And the commercial buffer, I think, was supposed to be kind of just that. It's a buffer between the residential from the cottonwood development and the other subdivisions that are around there and that light manufacturing area to the northern by Glass.
Neighborhoods are, for like in the neighborhood?
Neighborhood commercial, they're like, yeah, they're like corner markets. On my mission, we lived above a deli in a residential neighborhood, but there's a commercial store downstairs where we could go get our food, our groceries, things like that, but it was in the middle of the neighborhood.
Okay, no, thank you.
Uh, the other things are other services, and those range from high-impact to low-impact, like barber shops and muticians, I, I don't think those are really high-impact. They do have chemicals and things like that, but those are outright permitted throughout. The other things typically are, they're either outright permitted in all the zones. Automobile repair is one of the few that is not. But everything else seems to be either outright permitted or requires a conditional use permit with C1, C2. So there's, there's really not a lot of difference between all of our commercial zones. I think we have too many commercial zones, I was talking to Debbie about that. Some of the commercial zones I don't even think we use, so. With that said, are there commercial zones you? are there commercial zones you would want to take it out as well? Or are the changes that I've made sufficient, or would you go further? I, just kind of let me know what, what you're thinking.
Any concerns with leaving it as we have in our packet with it just being taken out of the town center as far as the commercial zones? We don't have the business park. Yeah, the others, at the other end of the table. It would not be allowed.
It would take a text amendment to remove commercial zone, set different commercial zones from our code completely. Like right now, if somebody wanted to put a, a business park in some of the light manufacturing area, or even another area, they could recommend, they could come forward with a rezoning for that zone. So while it's in our code, if they wanted to rezonate to that, we couldn't say no, pick a different. We'd have to actually remove it from our code through a text amendment.
What, what about, as in here, minimum, a 600 square feet, what about a maximum?
Maximum percentage. Josh and I were talking whether to put a maximum as a percentage of the square footage of the structure.
Because I just see part of, you know, our way of thinking was having commercials, so you have your businesses in there. We don't want all of a sudden a live work that's overtaking our business because of the size of it.
Right. I pointed, Josh, everyone says we want commercial for the tax base. Here, being residential, we're removing the tax base of commercial, out of commercial.
Not necessarily, because this residential can only exist if there is commercial development.
But it's still, the square footage-
You just did with residential, though, we're dealing with the commercial.
Well, you're dealing with both. So the live work can only exist if you have a commercial development either below or in front of the residential. If you want to set a maximum percentage of the business, I have no problem putting in a maximum percentage and taking that forward and letting the county commission make a decision on that. I, I don't see any problem with it. I'm not married with the current text. It's whatever you think. If you feel that there needs to be a maximum percentage for the residential units based on the total square footage of the business, then, then make the proposal, and I'll take that forward as a part of your recommendation.
Well, I'm just saying that normally a commercial business would be taxed according to the square footage. But now some of that square footage will be a primary residence, so it'll be-
Taxless.
Taxless, yeah, as a primary residence. It just-
I have to disagree with you there a little bit, because the business is going to be the size that that owner wants that business to be. It'll be developed as such, but they're adding something on top. Most commercial businesses that you see don't, they're not two stories. The two-story commercial developments you see, they're typically office buildings.
Unless it's in the back of the building. I'm saying if it was-
Let me give a difference. If I can have a 100 square foot office front, and then all the rest of the building be residential technically, that would be within the code, right?
Well, I, I guess. I'm not sure how you would make 100 square feet work for an office, but-
Drive-by popcorn shop. I'm just saying, you can do a small place where it's delivery or, or, or something of that nature, and still have a small place.
I don't, I don't see that happening for this, because, I mean, if it's going to go in as a primary business, the business has to be the primary thing. And the residential unit has to be subsidiary to the primary use. A 100 square foot primary use.
How do you define primary?
Primary is the primary use on the property. So the business has to be the primary use.
So that means basically more than 50%?
Like 60 is 60, so?
I mean, it seems like basically then primary should be over 50% by definition, right?
Right.
The primary use has to be the primary struck, the primary use on the property. So let's say you have a residential, residential property. You want to put a barn or a workshop on there, but you don't have a house, then I'm, then I'm going to tell you no. Because the barn, if it's agriculture, then the barn could be considered an accessory to the agriculture, because the agriculture would be the primary use on the property. But if you have a subdivision that's in R120 or whatever, and the primary use is single-family residential, then without a primary, single-family home, you're not going to get a permit to build an accessory structure on there. And likewise with this, if they're coming through the process and they're rezoning their property to commercial highway or whatever to put a live-work situation on there, and that business is going to be the primary use.
Maybe we kept that during site plan review or building premiere.
Yeah, all of this-
They'd still have to follow step-back requirements, especially if the, the business is going to be primary, then you couldn't just add an, an, an overdeflated apartment on top of it.
So they have to go through site plan review, which comes through planning commission and county commission as well.
So is there any harm of putting a-
I think a maximum is-
Maximum.
I think good, a maximum percentage of the total square footage, so-
That way they're rolled out.
Is it more of like the business has to be 60%?
I would say 60 to 70, that'd be my thought.
Any? What?
It's number three.
Number, yeah. Number three. We're just, does someone else have another? What do you think is appropriate? The business is the primary use. How do we make sure it stays the primary use?
In other words, we're basically defining what, what percentage of the building has to be business in order for that to qualify as primary in essence.
As a primary use, right.
No, you could add a sentence at the end. So it could read, "Minimum size of a live-work dwelling shall be 600 square feet in size and shall be located within the primary use and shall be no more than 40% of the primary business square footage."
Right, and that's what I was saying. I was saying basically, in essence, you're defining what primary. I understand that you write it different.
Or of the structure, because not the, not the primary business. Because a primary business-
Well, a development can have more than one business on there.
Right, no, but-
So-
But if you're saying it can be 40% of the-
Primary business.
Business, but then the business has already shrunk to the 60, and so you're doing 40 of the 60. So you have to do it of the original footprint, or-
If the primary, if the primary business, let's say they're proposing a 5,000 square foot business for a veterinary hospital, or a veterinary clinic, or whatever, or a 3,000 square foot grocery store, or coffee shop, or restaurant, or whatever, then the residences above have to be a minimum of 600 square feet each, but they could go up to 40% of the primary business to which they're attached.
So if it was, just sorry, just, if it was one business, or one built, the whole building is one business, could I put 40% on one side and 60% on the other? Does that have to go above the business?
It could be behind.
It could be behind.
Those residences, those, those residential apartments are not going to be 40% of a 6,000 square foot business. They're not going to be that large.
Can I say something? The reason why this isn't a huge delta, Shane, how much more expensive is it to build commercial than residential? Would you say it's equal?
No, residential's probably 150 to 200 square feet. Commercial is probably about two, three times that square foot.
So, that's my understanding. You, you would know. But in my head, this isn't a feasible way for somebody to sneak in rental units. Like it just doesn't pencil to try and, and build a commercial building for residential use. It does, it's not logical for somebody to abuse this that way. So from my perspective, that, I can see where you're coming from, but also I, I just don't see that being something for, that somebody would even attempt to abuse. From my perspective, I just think it would be too expensive to build these out with the intent of residential being the, the primary purpose. Rents just aren't that high.
Not yet.
Even still, the commercial, the, how much it costs to build commercial versus residential, you could build townhomes or a single-family home way cheaper than you could do this.
Could, like, if I were to take the buildings that just went in by the Mountain Green Airport, those are pretty simple buildings. I mean, is that, would that still be two or three times? I mean, because they're basically just stucco on the outside, empty hole on the inside. Does, I, I guess I don't know enough about it, that's what I was trying to understand. It seems like two to three times, if I'm only doing is a stucco outside and that.
And you're buying light fixtures, and if they say modern, they're like twice as much as, if they don't.
You're talking finishes.
The minute it says commercial, it's even worse. Like it just, so yeah, even on those flex spaces, it's way more expensive to build that than it is a residential home. So I find it hard to believe that somebody's going to build this out with the intent of, I want a popcorn shop, and then I'm going to maximize this.
That's why we're going to put a maximum.
I said, it doesn't hurt to have a maximum, right?
No. But just, that's why it's not, it may have a target use that way.
So what, maximum 40%?
That's what I propose.
Does anyone have heartburn with that? The business would occupy 60%?
No.
So what I figure is if they have a minimum of 600 square feet for one apartment, their commercial would be 1,000 square feet, just under 1,000 square feet.
Yep.
Okay. That'd be pretty small.
That'd be, that'd be real small. Okay, you got it? The next is to add the business license requirement and-
Yep, I've noted that.
You've noted that in six? And the employee or owner shall occupy-
So going back to the zones that they're allowed in?
I think, yeah, everyone's fine.
How I've shown it with the C3, C1?
That's fine.
Okay. Are you okay with the enforcement options that I've added as C on the second page?
Maybe that's the county attorney. I don't know if there's, is there enough teeth in there?
Yeah, references our enforcement section in 8-1-8 for the counties, which we went over at the beginning of the document.
Sorry, it's probably in here. Remind me, I know we talked, when we talked before about parking, it's, or how does, remind me how parking works, or is there any limitations to parking?
Well, currently, our code requires two parking spaces per residential unit. The parking requirements for businesses are far higher than that. And typically, what I've seen is that live-work doesn't have to, they, they're going to share the parking of the commercial. They're not going to go over, because the residents are going to be there when the businesses, they're not going to be there typically when the business is running. If their employees are going to be down in the business anyway.
But their car will be there.
Their car will be there, but the total number of spaces-
The whole chant would be their cars there, yeah.
Well, the total number of spaces that the code typically requires accounts for the number of employees that are going to be there, plus customers. Typically how they're designed.
I'm just mostly cur, making sure there wouldn't be a scenario where they would run out of parking.
Most of the time in America, our parking codes overpark, and there's too much asphalt. That's been my experience. I will say our parking code is woefully lacking. So if you want to review that and maybe make a suggestion, that might be nice.
You're saying separate to this?
Separate to this.
So you're talking about noise made by animals? Are you talking about the people that live in the apartment?
Yeah, Commissioner McConnell-
Or a vet, I mean-
No, no.
But that's kind of here.
It would be the nuisance of the animals in the residential dwellings. Commissioner McConnell brought up an example of, he dealt with something like this, where they were just making a lot of noise because of the business and the use. And so if you want to take out the, the noise, the animals, I mean, I'm not-
No, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure it's for the residents and not the business.
Yeah, it's for the residents, that was-
Well, okay. I just want to make sure that that's clear. Because if there's a vet, it will be noisy.
So not including veterinary business?
Or does not including commercials?
Not including the, the commercial, but the noise made by animals in the residential units or something.
The applicant suggested just taking out from animals, so it's any noise, because there could be other-
Okay, noise ma, yeah.
So noises-
Noises.
Shall be controlled and enforced?
Okay.
Well, 8-6-46B, that specifically relates to the, the family food production animals. And so-
So you need to check, scratch that.
You can scratch it.
Shall be controlled. And we don't have a noise ordinance in the county. We probably should try to come up with one. We've run into that on multiple conditional uses.
Well, the, the noise portion of it would probably go to the state code, because I think I referenced the state code, so it's whatever's required by our code or the state code. And I know that there are some provisions we've gone through where it does reference some noise. I don't think it clearly defines it, though.
Well, the number two talks about other noise nuisance, so do we want to just combine those?
Yeah, I can combine those. So two and three?
No, one and two.
One and two.
All right.
Because if we're taking animals out, then we're just being, we're done with the, you know?
Yeah. Anything else you want to add in?
What's up for me?
No.
And then the last bullet point, oh, there's two, sorry. Should there be a prohibition on short-term rentals, like VRBOs, yes?
Yes.
Okay, I will add-
If you take short-term rentals out of the rest of the county, then I would say yes, leave it in commercial, but I don't think it's going to work that way, so.
That wouldn't work with, that wouldn't work with this anyway, right, where they've got to be-
An employee.
They've got to be employees, so that becomes a moot point.
And then the last bullet point, should CCNRs be required? That was already a requirement that we had put in the code. It's number nine. But that was one of the questions that the county commission wanted me to ask. So is number nine sufficient, or do you want me to expand on it?
And that's where noise would also come into effect, the animals and that, would be in the CCNRs. We're done with the bullet points? Anybody have any other concerns? Just to be clear, we're not being forced to give a positive recommendation. We can still make a negative one.
You can make a negative recommendation.
You can make a recommendation with the changes that we've made tonight, or we can recommend denial.
Recommend denial, but if they approve it, these would be your suggestions. I think that's what they were looking for, is they want your input.
Doesn't make sense to me.
Why not?
Because it's, I mean, they'll have it whatever, so either we give a negative recommendation, or we give them what we want and do a positive recommendation, because they're going to-
No, because if you give a negative recommendation, you can still let them know that you're, you disfavor it.
Because of-
It, it matters. The reason they send it back, I mean, they could have done this themselves. The reason they send it back is they want your input. But at the end of the day, they're the only ones that are accountable to the people. You're appointed by them, and so you're accountable to them. That's how our government's set up. And so, you know, you, you can still represent the people and take- and take into account the things that are said, but at the end of the day, you're not accountable to the people as an elected official. And so they're, they're trying, they're not, not valuing your suggestions if you recommend denial and then they approve something or vice versa. They're just saying, at the end of the day, they have that accountability to the people and they want as much input as you can provide. So, I, I mean, I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just letting you know that that's the form of government we have. And, and I think if, if you have the attitude that it doesn't matter what we say or, you know, whatever, then you're not working together in providing the best outcome for the county that's allowed or that's wanted through our structure.
I think we missed the opportunity in our findings. When we recommend denial, we should have findings so that the county commission knows what, what we think. They'll always ask Josh, why, what was the county commission thinking? And, uh, poor man, I have no clue because we don't specify. So I think we need to be diligent with our findings. When, if it's denial or even if we recommend approval, we need to ask some findings. You know, why make sure that they're, they're listed there so that the county commission knows our reasoning.
I agree. I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
If I may add, uh, we still need to open up to the public.
Yep. Are, are we done talking among ourselves? Okay, so I'll have a motion to go into public hearing. Do I have a motion? Okay, I have a motion by member Phillips. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by member Little. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any public comment? Yeah, come on. Just please state your name.
Gina Kelly, Mountain Green. My comments from the past still stand and you guys have had good discussion. And Mr. Paul gives a good example of one business, but you've looked at what business districts this can be put into once it's, once it's passed. And so you can't think it's just gonna be a veterinarian that's going to use this. Any business in those zones is gonna be able to use this. And so I like the discussion you've had and the definitions that you've given to it, but I still don't think it makes sense. Thank you.
Any more comments?
Kelvin Judd, I represent Val and Real Estate Transactions on a few of these. And I just wanted to compliment the process tonight. I think you guys did a great job. I think the county commission did a great job as well. I, I think it's pretty cool watching action that some of the disagreements and some of the different opinions and working together. But I guess, I just echo a lot of the stuff that's been said. I mean, I see, like Andrew mentioned, there, there are just some real pros to businesses being able to succeed in Morgan County. I mean, the last county commission meeting, there were, um, some grants given to businesses that are struggling. And I think this just gives an extra arrow in the quiver for what we want to succeed here. And that's, that's more tax-based and that's better for our residents in the end. So, thank you.
Okay. No more public comment? Motion to go out?
Motion to go out with public comment.
Motion by member Miller. Do I have a second? A second by member Phillips. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're out of public hearing. No time for motion.
I guess what other people still, I mean, I would probably still, my druthers would still recommend to deny, but then at least put up something, if, if the majority of people were going to recommend to deny, then we should put up something or approve or disapprove. I just was curious of what everybody else's feelings are as far as approval or denial or what we'd recommend.
Since this came through the first time, uh, just another conversation, not really about this. I've listened to business owners talk about how hard it is to find employees when they can go and, kids can go get hired for eighteen bucks an hour in and out, and people are trying to find labor and they can't compete or whatever your business is. The restaurants in Morgan, one of their biggest hurdles and one of their biggest obstacles is employees and being able to retain employees specifically. I think this does provide a lot of opportunity for businesses to be able to have something more, kinda like what Kelvin was saying, another arrow in the quiver to keep employees. And in my head, it's all, it's a lot about supporting local businesses, being able to keep employees here in the county. And I see that as a good thing. I don't see this as a perfect thing or even something that's not easy to look at, to be honest. But I also see that it's probably really beneficial to the businesses in the county to have the option if they have the money to build these buildings. That's my perspective.
I'd like to read perspective. Haley couldn't be here. She's out of town. And she gave me some comments. She's talking about these dwelling units. She says, if passed, how are we going to enforce? So we, we've discussed that. She's recommending owner occupied, just one dwelling. And just permitted in mixed use, like the town center. I don't think it belongs in the more industrial areas. And she talked about businesses that have hazards, but it, it is addressed here. And so she said it, for as far as short-term, she said she would be a no. So those are just her comments.
For short-term rentals?
Yeah, she said no.
Yeah.
So, any other comments?
I should know this. I don't. How does this affect Josh? Like, um, Wasatch Peaks or Ravalla or someone like that? Would it, could they apply under this for greater density?
So Ravalla is a single-family residential subdivision with Gulf Course. I'd have to look at their approval. I believe they have a development agreement. So with that development agreement, if the development agreement defined the clubhouse as a commercial use, then they'd have to go back and, um, I'd have to look. Cause their overall zoning is not gonna be one of those commercials unless it's clearly defined in the development agreement. So I can't really talk about Ravalla. Other than if, if the clubhouse was zone commercial per that development agreement, then technically they could amend their development agreement and go through the legislative rezoning process to amend that development agreement to try to add this on. But then they would be going through the site plan review process as well and would have to bring the property up to code standards with regards to landscaping, parking, lighting and, and architecture as well.
Okay, I think I understand. But so, for example, if you had a commercial outfit come in and, for example, Wasatch Peaks, easy for me to, cause that's the one I can remember with my limited memory. But if they put up a ski shop and they wanted to put additional units above that, would that open the door for that?
I don't think it would affect Wasatch Peaks because Wasatch Peaks, the development agreement already allows multifamily condominiums and apartment type things. And every unit has to chew up one of their ERUs already. And in their proposal for their, their village center, they're proposing their multifamily kind of around it to provide for some of their, uh, owners who are building a building to, building a home to live there until the home is completed. And then it would be shuffled out for a new owner to live there while their home is being constructed, that kind of thing. I believe they're planning on shuttling all their employees up and then back down at the end of the day. That's what I've been told. But their development agreement is very specific with the total number of ERUs they're allowed. Um, and they've defined it into different parcels for development. Some parcels don't allow any type of multifamily. Some allow for some multifamily, some single-family. But the proposed areas for their north village weren't defined really as commercial, just amenity spaces where they were gonna provide those types of uses, like clubhouse, a restaurant, an outfitter type thing. Uh, but it wasn't zoned commercial. It was, it's zoned, uh, resort special district, which allowed all of these types of uses. Livework wasn't one of them. So I would imagine if they wanted to add livework, um, it would go against the whole basis of their development agreement, which was supposed to be a private resort, um, not open to the public. I, I don't see them doing it.
When you could, that, you could think of as if Heinz were to have an apartment on the back where a cashier.
Oh, I get that.
Heinz is actually a good example because right now, the last I heard, um, cause I received a complaint, um, was that the owners of Heinz were living in an RV behind the Heinz. And living in an RV is only allowed in RV parks. It can't be set up for habitation anywhere but in an RV park. So for the Heinz property, if they said, we're, we wanna construct a home where we can live or, uh, you know, an apartment behind the gas station, they'd have to come back through, go through the site plan process and bring the site up to code with regards to landscaping, parking, lighting, things like that. But, and they'd have to meet the architectural standards that we have for commercial. Um, but it would be possible for them.
Other than, I thought that on some of the places it wasn't allowed, it was like automotive repair and that, right?
Um, so.
I, I know it's an example.
Well, Heinz grocery store is different than the machine shop, right?
No. No, so if it's a hazardous use that currently occupies the site, the way we've written it, the way it's written is that if a hazardous use occupies the site, then it automatically would restrict it from not being able to do livework. Or if they do a livework with the business underneath and they convert that business to another use that has a hazardous, then the apartment has to go away or the hazardous uses outright prohibited. That's, that's how we've written it so far.
You have any?
No.
Opinion or?
Well, I, I would ask, ask the planning commission, I, cause I haven't been here obviously. So what was the, what was your opposition to doing this? Can you bring me up to speed really quick? I should prioritize all of this right on.
One of the big ones was, we're worried about how it could be abused with short-term rentals. And then also there was already the town center zoning that we felt like covered it. But they've taken out the town center zoning portion of it. And then put restrictions on the, the business licensing to where there's some enforcement to, that it's actually employees and not gonna turn into, hopefully not gonna turn into.
Apartments.
Apartments that are abused.
But there's more than just the town center too, right down there. You got a whole bunch of mixed use in that area besides just town center.
I'm just saying the town center park, they've said this can't go in.
Right, but what I'm saying is, or what we're saying is there was already a lot of spots there for people to live because there's a lot of mixed use in the Mountain Green area.
That they could do this.
That they could do this without putting it in the commercial.
I think that was our finding.
Cause that, we weren't dealing with just town center.
That's right.
So I'm curious, has the discussion changed your mind at like a hospital, an animal hospital? Or it makes sense for a doctor to have assistance there or whatever? Does that change your mind or all shame?
I'm still, I don't know quite what to think. I can see some of it, you know, like the veterinarian part of it. And the hard part is trying to say, you know, across the board with all of it. For the most part, I don't see where it's beneficial, other than someone making money off of it.
I think before, it, it could've been rented out to anybody. I think that's how it was before.
Yes.
Having it restricted to employees is what's changing my mind.
Having that make changes the scenario a little bit. Cause if you just rent it out to whoever, then, you know, I didn't like it at all. But if it's strictly employees.
Kinda hard, I think, too.
I think it was, part of it was how we control it as well. So we address some of that.
Yeah.
So who's kept a list of all the conditions? I have none. I should have.
I think most of it's the bullet points.
Yeah, Josh has been taking good notes. I've got some notes, but Josh?
Yeah, so did you want me to go through them so that whoever makes the motion can just say as, stays by staff?
I won't be making a motion, but yes, I think he's.
Okay. The changes to residential livework, the land use table, uh, the planning commission stated that they were okay with how staff had changed the permitted to conditionally used permits for, uh, commercial buffer, neighborhood commercial and commercial shopping, leaving it outright permitted in commercial highway and general commercial.
Is there a reason why you did that?
Uh, what do you mean?
Why, why, why commercial buffer was C3?
Uh, because I, I thought commercial buffer, the, some of the uses within those zones would be industrial in nature and would be more hazardous. And so it might be good to have more control over that and review that.
And commercial shopping, just retail.
It's more like retail shopping center. Um, I guess you could have, I guess you could have office space in that area, but I thought having a little more control over that would be good. Neighborhood commercial, just my own personal experience, it's perfect for livework. So I thought maybe a C1. Uh, the other changes were to modify number three to add and shall be no more than forty percent of the primary business square footage. Modify number six to say employees or owner shall occupy the residential area above or behind the primary business structure and add in language requiring, uh, business license review, uh, annually, uh, to check for who's living in the, uh, livework, uh, unit. Uh, to modify the nuisance section to delete one completely since it relates to the live, uh, the, the family food production and that would relate to, uh, this item. Reword number one, um, to just talk about all noise instead of just loud music, et cetera. Uh, and then add in a prohibition for, uh, short-term rentals. That's what I have so far.
You did say the shall, me, I thought, okay. Okay. Any more opinions or concerns? Okay.
We'll make a motion to approve based on the modified text that staff put together. I don't know the proper verbiage.
It's, it's written there. It's a sample motion.
All right.
Page two.
Page one, page.
Make a motion for approval with additional changes. I believe we approve the revision to Morgan County Code, section eight dash five, C dash three, use regulations and adding section eight dash five, article M, to allow for livework type dwelling units within commercial zoning districts based on the text listed in exhibit eight of the staff report dated May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three with the corrections that we've given staff.
And this would be a recommendation, not, not a motion to approve?
Yeah, recommendation.
The county commission.
It says approve here. He was.
Yeah, I just read off there.
He did as. He did as instructed. You gotta make us look smart, Josh.
Sorry, that was my bad.
Okay, I have a motion by member Phillips. Do I have a second?
Oh, a second.
Okay, a second by member Wilson. Any more discussion on this motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Unanimous. Not wholeheartedly, but nevertheless. You ready for number eight? Plan Community PC Zone Text Amendment.
So this item, the Plan Community Zone District Text Amendment is a proposal to add a new zoning district into the Morgan County Code, which would allow for property owners and developers to create their own tailor-made zoning districts. With the understanding that they would be submitting a whole host of items for review and adoption as part of that ordinance, which would be the document that would track their entitlements going forward. Such submittals would include a narrative document that would discuss the general plan performance, current zoning location, and current ingress, egress, current development plan, proposed uses that there is, what they want to put in their development, the proposed development standards, which would include lot areas, lot coverage, max building type, proposed setbacks, design guidelines, including architectural design, elevation styles, and parking standards. They would also provide landscaping, preliminary landscaping and open space plan, project lighting, a preliminary project lighting plan, infrastructure and utilities, proposed connections, how they were going to provide those utilities. If there's a project signage, comprehensive sign package for that, and then the project phase-in. All of this would be required along with certain maps upfront as part of their rezoning package. And that's for properties, we're proposing properties that are five acres up to 20 acres. Obviously, if you feel that those need to be larger, please make a recommendation to increase those. And I'll make that change. Those would be tier one projects. Tier two projects are for larger projects. And those projects would also be required to submit additional items, including preliminary grading and drainage plans, preliminary geo-hazards and geotech reports, preliminary infrastructure and utility plans, and traffic impact analysis. This was brought forward to you two weeks ago to give you additional time to read it and to study it and see if you had additional changes or modifications you wanted to make to it before making a recommendation to take to the county commission. I have talked with Commissioner Wilson, I've talked with Commissioner Little, and Commissioner Sessions a little bit. And going through that, I understand that Commissioner Bass sent an email with some additional changes that she wanted to see changed. So we can either tackle it how you want, or if there are changes that you want me to make or whatnot, or we can go through per section or whatnot.
Josh, when I was reading through this this week, can you give me an example of where in the county this would work with the current future land use map from the general plan?
So, I, sorry, I keep saying so first, that's really bad, I apologize. With the current general plan, it, it wouldn't work anywhere. The current general plan would have to be modified. It would have to be amended. And that would have to go through planning commission, county commission. Typically, that would occur at the time of rezoning. This proposal though, for the PC zone, would require so much work and financial investment upfront that it might be a good idea to require them to go through the general plan amendment first to see if there is support from the planning commission and county commission before they invest all the money to go through the rezoning process. That would be my recommendation, is to add in a, a section that would require a general plan amendment prior to any submittal of anything else. Because that way they get a general understanding of where the planning commission is, the county commission, and the surrounding property owners for that land, the future land use map change. But right now, any rezoning that would go forward pretty much would also be required to go through a future land use map amendment at the same time. But there's, there's so many submittal requirements for this that, I guess, I, at least if I were a developer or a property owner that wanted to develop my property to give maybe additional density, cluster, preserve the rest of the open space, I would want some, I guess, some assurance that what I'm proposing before I spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on all of these documents, that I was going to get my entitlements. And requiring the general plan amendment prior to that would be a good indicator.
Where would you put that about the general plan amendment?
I would, I would add that actually in Section 8-13A-020 and I'd leave everything else down and renumber it.
So I am understanding this right? The way that this is right now, there, if it lines up, if it has to work with the future land use map in the general plan, the way it sits right now, this...
Well, that's the thing, this is a rezone. So they're going to go through a rezoning process. And currently rezoning processes, you're required to also amend your future land use map per our rezoning application. So even if it doesn't comply with the future land use map, it doesn't mean it can't be changed.
But that's no different than what we've got now.
Correct. However, if they want to tailor their zone and get additional density or cluster their development or provide commercial plus some additional residential or however they want to design their development, we don't have any, we don't have anything in our code that would allow that currently. And so if somebody wanted to cluster, let's say they have 100 acres of agriculture and they want to develop that for homes, well, they would be going through a rezoning process to do that and a future land use map amendment as well. Because if they want, they want it to pencil, they're going to have to get a little bit more density than five lots out of 100 acres.
Right.
But let's say they want to cluster it all into three or four acre lots and preserve the rest, then this zone would be the one that you would want to have them use so that it preserves the maximum amount of agriculture or...
Before we go any further, I know I've had the discussion with you where you're having it placed in the code. I think this is a, a zoning ordinance, like it is, so it should be under 8.5, like with resort special district, all the other zones.
If you want me to move it there, I can...
Well, that, maybe it should be the county commission. But I think it's, since it is a zone, it should be up with the zones.
I can definitely renumber and move it, it's not solely on the location.
I know you, you put it where the PRUD was.
That's correct.
But that wasn't a zone. And this is a zoning ordinance.
Remind me, and I know we talked about it before, because, I mean, I like the idea of the, or where you're saying it gives some more control upfront or that. But what was the other zone that is the opposite, where they could still do it under the current code?
The town center zoning, they go through the rezoning process just like we have. The last town center rezone we had, there was a lot of public involvement. They didn't want it. They didn't think it followed the general plan, even though town center is technically a commercial zoning district. Town center, so, but they're not required by law to bring anything forward at the time of the rezoning. Our code doesn't require them to bring a development agreement forward at the time. They don't have to do anything like that. And so that rezoning went through to, on the MMD Nelson property. And now, because they have their rezoning, they're also going to go through the development agreement, which is basically the negotiation between them and the county of the entitlements that are going to be modified. This would require everything upfront. So if they were proposing the PC zoning district, that development agreement, or in this case, the narrative and all the documents associated with that would be required to come forward at the time of the rezoning.
Well, that's what I, that's what I prefer to do on the town center as well. Is I guess my point is that way they've either, they don't have the, they're not choosing, hey, I can either wait and just get the zoning and then figure out what, or then get approval or do it before. Why wouldn't we just bring it into, I would, I would prefer to do it, bring them in unison so the town center has to do the same thing.
If that's a recommendation, I can take that recommendation forward.
Is there a reason why you wouldn't recommend it?
Well, currently the town center zoning, we have a, a lot of development agreements that have already been put in place in the town center zoning. They went through that process. They're not necessarily tied to having ordinance and their zoning defined by a specific ordinance. Their zoning is the underlying zoning, and then the development agreement modified it accordingly. So if you kind of mix the two, it's going to create some confusion there for enforcement later on. Going forward, if you want future town center developments to go through the PC zoning district and we call it town center, and they have to submit everything upfront, I mean, we could definitely...
That's probably more, I'm saying, I don't know if I was saying to make everybody this already gone through, redo it, I was just saying going forward.
I would probably recommend anybody that wants town center zoning to go through the PC zoning district ordinance first. It is just cleaner, it's easier to enforce and follow.
Yeah, so that'd be my thought.
The zoning itself is going to identify the ordinance that adopted it.
Yeah, so that's all I was, I was saying, going forward, it'd be the same thing, that'd be my recommendation.
So maybe, let's kind of go through, we don't have to go through line by line, but we'll go through like section by section if anyone have any concerns.
So just help me understand this a little bit more. Because the way that I'm seeing this is, it's a way of, Morgan's kind of hard because you got 820, R5, R10, whatever. So you're limited in a center, right, with where to go? So the way I see that this is going to happen is, what's going to do is, it's going to take your big sections at 820, which is your agricultural area, the ruralness of Morgan that I like personally and don't want to see changed. Now it's going to make it easier for someone to come in and do under this here to take away that agricultural, that, all that 820. It's not going to work in, I mean, I don't even know why it has the R5 in here. That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, we'll discuss that when we get there, whether...
Yeah, but that, so am I seeing this right? Though that's what I'm seeing with it, is it's going to take all these fields here. And I know that you got all your secondary, all that stuff you got to come up with, but someone will do it. So to me, I see it as an avenue to where we're going to let go our ruralness in Morgan and we're going to be urban.
They can already do that under the town center, can't they?
Without a reason, but...
But they have to reason.
The agriculture areas that you're talking about, if they have 1,000 acres of agriculture, they can already develop them with 50 units on there, if they want to divide it into 20 acres.
But they're limited.
But it's spread out, you are preserving absolutely no space whatsoever. If you take that same 1,000 acres and you consolidate that entire development into 1 or 200 acres over the 1,000, and all that development occurs in that 100 or 200 acres and you give them, say, five extra lots, then you have actually preserved more open space in agriculture than you would under our current zoning.
So I disagree, I don't see that.
Was that...
Okay, we can disagree, but it will preserve more agricultural space.
But what Josh is saying, he's also going to put in here is that they have to go through the general plan amendment to be able to do this. If they want to change the underlying...
Well, but what he's saying is to make it easier for them to have them redo the general plan so that they don't have to go up from pay all the fees, is what I was...
That's not what I'm saying at all. What I'm saying is, there are members of the planning commission and there are members of the county commission that don't want to see the agriculture land chewed up with commercial, industrial, or whatever. So if I require them to go through a general plan, land use map amendment first to get the general understanding or the, of what the planning commission and the county commission want, county commission because they are the ones that make the decision, then the property owner or the developer is not expending hundreds of thousands of dollars upfront to prepare all these documents when the general plan doesn't show that that's there currently. And going forward, they don't want the proposed development there anyway. So it's a way for the developer to gauge the community of whether they want that development there or not.
They're going to have to get a general, a general plan amendment done prior to doing this.
But that's what I'm suggesting we put in there. So that the developer would go through the general plan, land use map amendment first and get the, gauge the desires of the, the community on, on the proposed development before they expand hundreds of thousands of dollars to prepare all the other documents for their rezoning.
Shane, my concern is really similar to you. I do not want to see from Mountain Green to Morgan filled up with rooftops. Like, it would break my heart. I want to, I want the same thing as you. I want to preserve as much rural atmosphere and the amazing place that I've got to grow up in. I'm, I'm really worried about all the forced growth. And on the, and I also recognize there's so much pressure coming to the Wasatch back. All of us, it doesn't matter if it's that. Hoitsville's going through the same thing, Colville's going through, I mean, the Wasatch back has massive pressure coming. I like that this could be created in a way that does preserve as much open space as we can. Some of that is going to need for Morgan and Mountain Green especially to allow for things to go up, right, instead of out. And these places in between, like Peterson and Milton, and having, having something in there that is going to allow for some growth, but not sprawl. You get sprawl going in the middle of the valley and it's over. We've lost everything that makes this place cool and, and special. So I'm with, I agree with you Shane. But I also see what you're saying, where it's, it is a way to preserve the open space. And maybe the, maybe the best tool we have to preserve the open space. One of my worries is, at some of these, it says that only 20% has to be open space. That 20% open space on, on some projects is a lot. When you're on five acres, if you can preserve 20%, that makes sense. But in my head, I'm thinking of the Thurston's property that runs, you know, from the end of the Island Road over to Morgan Valley Drive. And if only 20% of that is left open...
The intent is, if they consolidate and they cluster the development, the measurement of the proposed open space, active and passive, is taken from the portion that they're developing. Everything else is going to be left open.
Okay.
The, the ordinance that they adopt shows where the development, development is to occur. And it'll identify the landscaping and the open spaces they're providing. Amenities would be included in that, like we talked a little bit, trails, clubhouses, tot lots, barbecue areas. I mean, anything that the subdivision or developer is proposing to put in the developed portion of their, their lot, that's where the open space would be calculated. The remaining, however, many acres is to remain natural, vegetated, that's... And if it's not clear in there, then I can reword that.
I think...
Go ahead.
I know, I think we do need to clarify that a little bit when we get to it. We kind of need to go through and, because we're, we're jumping around.
Yeah, sorry.
No, 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 it's fine.
I just want to get a little clarification in my head before we start through it, because...
Well, I think, you'll, you'll get some clarification... Well, I think, you'll, you'll get some clarification, like, the land use map amendment has to happen. The, the county commission has to actually approve that land use map amendment before they can go for the zone.
Right.
And so if it's not appropriate in that area-
But it's the same thing as the special resort district.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's the same thing, it's just another avenue now that's created for people to come in and do something. That, that's what this is.
Yes. It's a flexible-
Or current property owners that would like to develop their property.
It would produce a better development than just a standard subdivision.
Would do that, for sure.
So, the purpose, I think that's, that's fine. I don't think anyone has any heartburn over what the purpose is. You will slip the land use map amendment in there, right after purpose?
Yep.
Or you add?
The first page of it. Land use styles.
With that land use map, we won't see any proposal, any sort of agreement, or any sort of concept on that, when they present that.
Future land use map amendment?
Future land use, yeah.
We won't see concept, no.
Well, if you want a basic concept plan of what they're proposing, I can add that in as a requirement of the future land use map amendment process, so that the planning commission and the county commission gets an idea of what they're proposing to do.
Because if we approve it, does it give them some sort of entitlement that it will happen, and then they could develop whatever?
If they come through the future land use map amendment process and they propose a concept plan that the planning commission and county commission are okay with, it doesn't give them any entitlements or incentives, but it does give them a gauge as to whether the community would be accepting to a rezoning that would allow that concept plan to go into place.
Okay.
If I'm, if I'm a developer, I'm not going to spend the money to create a concept plan and the preliminary drawings and the architecture and the design and everything else if the planning commission recommends denial and the county commission denies a future land use map amendment on a piece of property. On the flip side of that, if, if my proposal with the concept plan receives general acceptance from the planning commission and the county commission, then that's a fairly good gauge of whether that development would be accepted. And if I'm bringing to the table exactly how that development is going to look with elevations, architectural design standards, preliminary plat, I mean, preliminary drawings and everything, then that gives the community an idea of what's being proposed there and what will go through. Because if I, if I get that adopted and then I bring it back to go through site plan review and it doesn't meet what was approved through all the conceptual drawings and everything through the rezoning, then I'm going through the process again.
So you would like to see the concept plan submitted with the map amendment?
Well, I mean, it's hard, it's hard to see. I mean, I don't-
That's not a bad ask.
I'm not, I'm, I would say yes.
So you have just a general idea of what they're asking?
Yeah, just a general.
That could have potentially saved a referendum on the M and D, Nelson, because it was submitted, because it wasn't provided.
Required, either.
Or required, yeah. It was suggested, they decided not to, a referendum was filed. It's since been withdrawn because they were able to meet with the developer and come up with a concept plan, basically, and agree to that. And so, based on that, the applicants for referendum withdrew because they said, oh, that's all we wanted, was a little idea.
I agree with Dustin. Having that upfront would be awesome.
Okay. Now, the land use styles, you want to explain how-
So the land use styles weren't meant to be zoning districts. If somebody submits a narrative with their concept development, these styles were meant to just provide us an easy kind of snapshot of what they're proposing to put in that, that section. So if, if their whole development is just neighborhood oriented and they're clustering it, then that gives us an idea that they're going to stick with the four to eight units per gross acre. There's not going to be, I mean, it may include some of the other things, but again, they're, they're just, they're just to give us a snapshot of what's being proposed. I can take those out, I can modify them, I can add in a rural standard as well, if we want kind of a rural option with the anticipated densities for a rural development that's going to be clustered. But they weren't meant to be zoning districts, just snapshots of what the developer's proposing to do on their property.
I talked to Josh about a rural land use style where you wouldn't have the park strips, you maybe have swales instead of curb and gutter and sidewalk and-
Ain't that wise?
And that would take the agricultural ground, if they wanted to cluster some of the lots in one area and leave the rest, but it, it's not the, the urban. I told him this has too much of an urban vibe, it needs a little bit more rural.
I can add that in.
I agree 100%.
So if we can get some rural in there, rural.
So, can I ask a question, Debbie? Josh, where's the language in either the general plan or in this, that talks about clustering and what the percentages are? Because I, for some reason, I'm not picking it up. Do you have that? Is it in the general plan?
There, there are.
So if, if this were-
Typically, in the general plan, it would list the, the density, the anticipated density. I believe a couple of ours have kind of an anticipated density, if I remember correctly, in the short descriptions of what they, they have just as a definition, but there's nothing definite. In our code, our zoning ordinance doesn't have anything related to clustering at all.
Don't you think that would be important to probably add into that?
As we go through the general plan process to get the new general plan updated, I would highly recommend that we include, well, there's quite a few things that I would recommend, you know, we can go into all of them, but we definitely need to define that further.
I have a couple more questions of this, right?
Go ahead.
On the general plan, do you see the county commission ever adopting the new plan?
I think they're required by state statute to adopt the new plan. I don't think the state statute has a specific timeframe that it has to be adopted, like other states I've worked in. I can double check that.
What do you mean they have to adopt it?
What's that?
What do you mean they have to adopt it?
The general plan has to be adopted by the county commission.
He's talking about the, the updated one.
Yeah, but-
There's a recommendation, I don't, it's not mandated, it has to be done every 10 years, it's a recommendation. Yeah.
So that's my confusion then. Are we, are we applying under the old plan or the new plan? And if the old plan doesn't have the language in there for clustering, where is that language coming into play?
I think the old plan does talk about clustering.
Well, the, the old general plan is discretionary anyway, so even if it doesn't, and our zoning ordinance does, it doesn't matter. I mean, we can further define these things.
So the way this is set up, clustering feature, if it was used, would just vary according to whatever the commission was asking for, right?
It would be defined by the applicant that comes forward. So let's say they have, let's just say 100 acres, to make it easy, of, of land, and they want, let's just say it's R, it's R-120. So on 100 acres of R-120, technically, you'd think that you'd be allowed about 200 units, maybe a few more, because it's, R-120's half acre, basically. So 100 acres, you're, you're looking at maybe 200 units, but that's not how you calculate it. You'd have to subtract out all the infrastructure and everything that goes in, curb, gutter, sidewalk, everything else, which would reduce the number of units you get by 25 to 35%, especially if it's all spread out over that 100 acres. But if you reduce the required lot size to, say, 8,000 square feet, and you allow them 250 units, then you've opened it up so that you're preserving approximately half of that acreage as natural open space, and everything's clustered in a portion of that development.
I think you've got to do something like that in these rural areas, where, let's take Milton, for example. If you've got 100 acres and they're only required to set aside 20 for open space-
They're not required to set aside any right now.
Well, I'm saying with, moving forward in here, if you've got a rural land use style, allowing for, tell me if I'm wrong, Shane, but if you've got 100 acres, if you can get the homes on, and keep the homes down to, you know, less than half that acreage, that's going to preserve those.
Yeah.
All that. Space still winds up staying more rural.
Not only that, so you have the natural open space that's automatically preserved because you're clustering your development, but the way it's written now is that that development, and I can modify it to make it clear, but the developed, the, the developed portion of it, so if you've now clustered, instead of developing the 100 acres, you've now clustered it into, say, 30 or 40 acres with smaller lot sizes, maybe two acre lot sizes or whatnot, then of that developed portion area, you're still having to provide 20% of that as active or passive open space. And that would include all the amenities for the subdivision, it would include the infrastructure. So you're not, you're not putting infrastructure all over 100 acres, you're only putting the infrastructure into 30 or 40 acres, preserving the 50, 60 acres as open space, the remaining portion. But you're also requiring landscaping and open space within the developed portion as well.
How does that feel, Shane?
I still don't like it. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at, just for my point, right? I got 100 acres, that's five homes. That's a big difference than 250 on, on 100 acres.
Well, let's, let's compare apples to apples, because the example I had for 200 homes was R-120 zoning, 100 acres of R-120 zoning, that you want to preserve open space on that. So let's take your example of 100 acres-
But that's not, but that's not comparing apples to apples, because we don't have 100 acres of-
That's right, you're not.
R-120.
So let's take 100 acres of A-20 zoning, right, that's 100 acres of agriculture.
Right.
Possibly prime agriculture land that has development potential. Currently, if you want to develop that, you would divide it into five equal increments of 20 acres each, subtracting out probably one acre to put the infrastructure in, in order to serve every single lot there. The cost for extending the infrastructure that far will go up, it's going to be astronomical to provide the infrastructure needed to divide it anyway. Whereas, if you allow for some development potential for that property, and you give that property or the option to create, say, 10 five acre lots, that's only using 50 acres of the 100. They've gotten a few extra lots in the process, and the infrastructure costs are going to be less because they're going to be condensed.
But you'd preserve more land.
You've preserved more land, you've allowed a few extra homes, and-
See, I don't see how you preserve more land. It, it just, it don't work for me.
Well, I think it has to be defined in the clustering. I think there needs to be an ordinance saying X amount of land is left for open space.
To me, you start clustering, you start putting them in groups and everything, that's-
20% of open space.
That takes away open space to me, because when I, I look at a group of stuff, I don't like it. I'd rather see it spread out.
But if you spread out an A-20, and you have 20 acre here, 20 acre, 20 acre, people can build a house, a barn, a shed, and that, they can sprawl within their 20 acres, and then that feeling of openness is gone, because you've got lots of structures. But if you have building envelopes and have all the building envelopes around a certain area, and the rest of theirs has to remain open, I think there's that feeling, but it's the same-
So here's the next scenario with it, okay, is if you, you do this, then they come in with the 100 acres, and you're going to give them the, the 250 homes, or say, whatever, and then work out the percentage, then the rest of all this, say, 50 acres stays open space. Does that mean it will stay open space for when?
Ever.
Or is someone going to come in and then try to redo these 50 acres?
No, you're, you're, the way that it's set up, it would be preserved forever.
Because it would be part of the rezon, the original rezoning, which is, so the development of that original rezoning to the PC zoning district is going to be defined by that conceptual development plan, which would preserve that, that additional space. It can't be divided off and sold separately. It's attached as part of that rezoning.
But what, what would get me, though, is all they got to do is come in for a rezon now, or modify the-
They couldn't, because it's all, it's all one piece at that point.
They'd have to come in and go through the entire PC zoning district process again-
Yeah.
-to amend the original PC zoning district. And if the PC zoning, the zone that they had received set aside that area as open space, then it could not be developed, because all the development potential for that lot has been squished and transferred into a smaller area. And the, the trade-off of that is, by giving the developer or the property owner a little bit extra development potential and a requirement for open space, trails, and amenities, both the county gets something because we're preserving more open space, we're preserving more land, the development occurs in smaller pockets, and those areas are preserved based on the ordinance that's adopted. So I don't, I don't see them going through the process and a planning commission and a county commission allowing for land that was developed already, where you've transferred the development rights into a smaller area to go back and develop more. That's not the intent of the zoning district.
But I'm old enough to know that when we would do that before and put land out for use, they would put it like the Ducks Unlimited, or Elk Foundation, or whatever. And then I got into this discussion not too long ago, and they're saying, well, that was under administration 20 years ago. How long ago was it, Debbie? And they're saying it doesn't really apply anymore, even though they had put that ground into a trust.
A conservation easement, yeah, held by a trust.
And the last time I talked to somebody about it, they were saying, well, that's pretty old.
I'm not suggesting it be put into a conservation easement with the state. What I'm suggesting is, when the zoning goes through and they're proposing to consolidate their development within one section of their entire property and preserving the other areas, because they're moving all that development potential into the small area that all their development's going to go into, by ordinance that's adopted by the county and recorded, it will be preserved. They can't come back and say, you know what, I want to develop it further, so I'm going to go through and change my PC zoning district. Well, you've already received entitlements that far exceeded what your original land would have accommodated. You've already, you've already developed that land.
Can you just make it so they can't reapply?
If you want me to put in a section in here that states the land that's being preserved because of clustering or condensing development cannot be developed in the future, we can definitely put a section in there that states that.
I think that's smart.
I wouldn't.
Something like that makes me feel better, because I, people will work however they can.
I, I think it's really smart, and the whole reason to do this is to preserve open space.
I think, I, yeah, I do too. I do, one is, we have to, we, we could put in a percentage of how much has to be open space, and then to make a requirement they can't develop that open space in the future.
On these large tracts of land, I think you'd want to, I don't know how you, what number you come up with, but in my head, you'd want to, to have at least 50% of that land preserved on large tracts.
A lot of it's going to come down with the developer, their original, their initial proposal, and then the negotiation between the developer and the county. So they'll go through the future land use map amendment, they'll, if, if that's denied, then obviously applying for a PC zoning district is not a good idea. If it goes through and there's some community support for it through the planning commission and the county commission, and then they go through the process and they submit their detailed, I mean, this is for them to propose to us their tailor-made zoning district with the minimums that we've outlined in here for landscaping, open space, trails, amenities, things like that. And if they can propose something to us that is above and beyond what they can normally get by developing the property, the property separately with just a straight- what they can normally get by developing the property separately, with just a straight zoning classification, I, I don't see the county losing, especially if we state in that process that any open space you preserve is going to be considered already developed and identified as open space, both on the conceptual development plan, as, as well as future Platts that are adopted as part of the subdivision process.
I, I get what you're saying, I just think in the, in these large tracts, especially in the rural settings, there's got to be a higher requirement for, for land set aside. It's not going to be the same in Mountain Green and Morgan as it is in Milton, Stoddard, Peterson, they're two different, they're two different places, right? If you're developing 20 acres versus 200 acres, I, I get the math on it, but in these rural settings, like going with what Debbie said, having a rural chapter, I think you've got to step the bar up on, it can't just be that 20%, 20% makes sense in some places, but in others, I don't think you can do that across the board.
It's not 20% of the entire site, we're talking 20% of the developed portion, so you're preserving all of this other open space.
But, could you do it as, above of 20, or whatever amount of acres, 100 acres, you have to have 50% open, so in other words, you just have to put it as a threshold of, once you were trying to apply for this, or for so many acres, now you have to have, or a percentage of just open space.
I mean, by head, that's what makes sense, I don't know how you do that.
So you're talking about above and beyond the 20% of landscaping, open, passive and active open space that's required for the development, the remaining portion that is preserved in a rural area has to be at least 50%.
I think we're saying total, meaning 50% of the whole total has to be, or open space, so including that 20%, that'd be another 30%.
But you gotta be careful with the two, because you need to, in my mind, you, if you're doing it, you gotta keep the 20% in where the clustering is, so that that doesn't look like a mess.
Correct, correct.
But then you still gotta have the percentage out around-
So, like a 30% additional side, yes.
Then you'd have 30% out.
But couldn't you just say like 50% total, and then they can still, they're 20%, no, I'm saying they're 20% already has to be by, already is in there, and so if you say 50% total, it means 20 is already there, and it adds up to an extra 30%.
On the outside.
On the outside, however you want to word it.
Because when you're talking open space, you're talking 20%, you have 20% of gross acreage, and that goes back to my thing.
Yeah.
20% of gross acreage.
I can clarify, because it was gross acreage of the development, developable area, so where they're developing, and I, I can clarify that.
So, Josh, one other thing while we're on this, talking to a friend of mine who's a developer, there was something like this that happened in Ogden, where the developer owned land where there's water that splits, there's water that splits the land, the land on the other side of the water is their open space, they did their development over here, and said, sweet, here's our open space, and there's no access. It's, it's open space, but there's no guaranteed access to it.
Yeah.
I think there's got to be something in there that defines that there would have to be access, you know, if you've got two sides of, if you've got the Weaver River splitting your land.
So, that, that area across the, the river, or whatever, if they had had access, could have been used as trail, or some additional amenity, so, I mean, we can work that into where if there is no access to the open space, then it cannot be counted as, as open space.
That's something that happened in Ogden, that they, after the fact, realized they'd been burned.
So, the other thing, you know, you're talking about, once this is all done, that the open space has to be maintained, you know, with everything, that's why I think there's got to be something to kind of set that open space, because someone's going to come in, and knowing, if they know that, that this is a done deal and no more, then they're going to push more taking that open space, they're going to go for as much as they can, in my mind.
In other words, if you close, if they only get one shot at it, they're going to go for as much as they can.
You betcha, they're going to push it just as far as they can take it.
True, but they have to convince you and the county commission of what they're proposing-
Right, but-
Is a better development than they could get developing it through the natural-
I'm just looking right now that things change over time, alright?
You're right.
And so, whatever we set up now, is going to, you know, if we're trying to be conservative with it, or if we're not, whatever, it's going to determine for the future for a little bit, so if we're pretty loose on it, or whatever, then it's going to open the doors for more, and so anybody can come in and say they're going to do it, and what's wrote down here, whoever's sitting in these seats, or the commission, that's their guidelines to go with, and so it will open the door more, so I think, you know, in my mind, I'd like to see basically the perpetuity, once they just, once they commit to it, they commit to it.
I don't think that's a bad thing to ask for at all.
I would agree, if you're allowing them to develop a little bit more density than what they normally would allow, in a smaller area, so that they're not spending more money on infrastructure, then asking them to, to make the open space that they are preserving in perpetuity is a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think at least, I would be more comfortable if we had them perpetuity, and then for a set amount of acreage, if we want, say, 100 acres, or 50 acres, or whatever, then they, they now jump up to they have to keep so much of it open space, 50% total or whatnot, and make it accessible, I think if we could hit all those, then it goes a long way to making, if they're going to apply for it to keep it much more rural.
So we have a good discussion on open space, which is further down in the document, which is fine, because we, we then say, have to discuss everything, but we're not going to make it through tonight, so I don't think we want to be here.
This one's going to take a few meetings before it's-
Right, but the next section I do want to hit, at least before we close, is land use styles, and I want you to look at the number of units per acre, and I think they're too heavy, and by, like neighborhood, to me neighborhood doesn't have commercial and industrial in it. I think a neighborhood land use style should be residential neighborhood, but yet, this definition-
Again, these are just snapshots, they can mix and match these, the real intent is for them to define what their proposed development is.
Right, but if they're going to say neighborhood, then they should say-
It sounds like the neighborhood-
This should just be neighborhood.
But there's-
You want mixed use, then you're going to find it as mixed use for commercial, or the village, which would be a little bit higher density.
Right, but we have a zoning district called neighborhood commercial, and there is a place for neighborhood commercial that, that maybe is-
But you have industrial.
That's true, I mean, I could tailor it, we, we can change it, I'm not married to the language, if you want me to tailor it even further and cross stuff out, I can, I can do that, if you want to reduce the densities, we can do that too.
Yeah, to me, they seem kind of steep, village of nine to 20 units per acre.
One, that was one of my questions with this, trying to just get my mind around all of it, as you read through these, basically, you're throwing out our commercial zoning too, in a sense, because someone could come in to whichever area they're trying to do it, and now you're, you're mixing the commercial in some of that residential area, is that right, with what's here?
Well, yeah, because the PC zoning district is for them to define their zoning.
Now allows for, for commercial.
And as part of that rezoning, there's a lot that the county expects them to provide us in return, so we're expecting them to, if they're going to tailor their zoning, and if they're going to propose additional density, additional height, because right now, we only, we only allow up to 35 feet in height, except in the WPR development agreement, they're allowed to go, I believe, up to 90.
Yeah.
So, to allow some additional development standards that our, our normal code, or our zoning code doesn't currently allow, they're going to, if we're going to allow them to tailor the zoning district on a piece of property that they own, then yeah, it is going to modify our current zoning districts, but it's not going to throw it out, because somebody may not want to go through this, they may want to say, hmm, I just want to go through and rezonate to general commercial, well, if they rezonate to general commercial, then they're, they're required to abide by the land use list in our code, they have to meet all the setbacks in our code, they have to meet the commercial design standards in our code, they have to meet the lighting in our code, and the parking, the landscaping and everything in our code, which is fairly minimal. If they're going to tailor it, and we have a say in what they're going to put on that property, maybe not the overall type of development, because they're going to have an idea of what they want there. The county commission, planning commission, county commission can deny, because it's an entitlement, it's, it's a legislative process, so they have to work with the county to get, get it through the process. But if they're going to define it, and they're going to come in, and they're going to present all of these items that they've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on, I think they're going to work with the county, planning commission and the county commission, through work sessions to make sure that what they're proposing is going to get approved. It doesn't negate any of our other districts, if somebody wants to rezone their property to municipal buffer, or things like that, then our code handles that.
That's what I see from this though, is I see this being on a bigger scale than what, basically like Wasatch Peaks, the same tech thing, I mean, that was a big thing, where they come in and work, and this here's going to be a big thing, where you, you might have two or three landowners or something that's going to get together, and expand this to however many acres you can get, so that someone comes in and starts doing it. I just see this as a big scale, that's going to open things up, that's, that's part of my concern as I read it.
So, a point that I would make to that though, if you think about Wasatch Peaks, is it had somebody else come in and developed it, and gone through all of this, and we don't have anything like this in place, we're actually pretty, whether you like the project or not, it's hard to deny, based on the amount of units, how much land was preserved forever.
Look, what, what I'm getting at though is-
Or, or even how many units per acre.
Wasatch Peaks, we sat and had many meetings with them Debbie.
I can't even count yet.
Yeah, a lot of meetings going through it, that's what I see.
Year.
You're, you're spending a lot of time with that work session of going through with it, I mean, we, I don't know how many months we sat here, once or twice, yeah, it was quite a while.
Man, I don't want to see another private ski resort come in by any means, but I do like the idea of projects coming in, and if you could keep that density, that amount of units to that many acres, that, that saves, that saves this valley from filling up with just endless rooftops.
Yeah, WPR's total land mass, I believe, was 12,000 acres, the development is only going to be on 2,300 of those acres, so, that development agreement, then the WPR rezone to resort special district, allowed them a certain amount of density, amenities, and things like that, it's going to bring in quite a bit of revenue with those homes going, because every single home is going to be a second home, or more, and they preserve
How many units did they get, 460?
Uh, no, they got a total of 750 ERUs, but in the development agreement itself, it says that they will probably never reach that, they're looking probably around 460, total, at total development build-out.
So even if you go up to 750, you're over 16 acres per unit.
That's about right.
If this whole county were 16 acres per unit, that'd be pretty awesome, in some ways, and in other ways, it's not, because if you just do 60 acres, 60 acres, like what Debbie said, you fill up with farms and-
Roads.
Roads and outbuildings, so to be able to condense that.
Grounds.
Yeah, we, I think, anyway, I think we've covered that.
So, if you want to continue it for another, I mean, open it up to the public-
Yeah, we need a public hearing.
But if you want to continue it, let me go through, rework some of this stuff, continue it for two weeks out, we can come back and talk about some more with the changes.
Yeah, especially, yeah, look at land use styles, because like I say, the densities, and I guess I impickure, the big development would have a neighborhood pod, and then it would have, and maybe there's a village pod, and then some neighborhood pods, you know, mixed use, and I don't see, this, I think if you, is implying that the whole development is called neighborhood, or not, or combined.
It was just supposed to be kind of a style, so, yeah, if somebody said, yeah, my development's going to be a mix of neighborhood, rural, and town center, then that gives you an idea of the densities in each of the areas.
Right, and that's why I don't think you need all the commercial and the neighborhood, because you're going to use, have the commercial with the town center, but, okay.
I'll rework those, and, and bring that back along with some of the open space changes in the general plan discussion that we had.
And then the, the one quick thing Haley wanted is, she thought five acres was too small for minimum size of a PC zone, and wanted at least 10.
I think we wait till-
No, but just, so be thinking of that, she can make that change, or you think about that-
One of my suggestions too, is to increase that.
The minimum, so be thinking, what, should the minimum be 20 acres? But yet, again, we're talking Milton as opposed to Mountain Green, so we have to-
That's right, I think you've got to have some, just-
I think you do a some percentage on a certain amount of acres, so if you do 20 acres, maybe it's a different percentage, if you got 200 acres, it's a different percentage.
We're talking about the minimum acreage requirement to be able to apply for this zone.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
But that's what I say, you have that issue, but you also have how, whatever your acreage is going to be, that there's some type of percentage in there to make it feasible to, I don't know.
Or where it's located, I mean, makes a big difference.
Yeah, it does, but you're, like you say, Mountain Green's going to be way different than Milton and Fordville, because you've got a huger amount of open space.
I mean, two different things if you can work on it, one is percentage per opens, or how big it is per how much open space they have, and then what's the minimum, right?
Minimum for the project.
Minimum to even apply.
Yeah.
Look at it, for enforcement, setting a minimum is a lot easier to enforce, if they come in and they say, this is the property I'm looking at, and I pick it up, I, I look at it and it's 20 acres, then that tells me what tier they're going to go in, it's just easier to track that way.
No, I get it.
I understand, okay.
But I can look at those things.
Okay, we have, we need to go on a public hearing before we adjourn, so if I have a motion to go into public hearing.
So who?
Motion by member Stevens, I have a second.
Second.
Second by member Little, all in favor?
Aye.
Repose, public hearing.
Thanks for waiting for the public hearing.
Tina Kelly, Mountain Green, I've just been listening to your discussion, and my comments from the last time still stand, but my thoughts might be random, but I haven't just typed them out, so bear with me. I feel like I've heard all of this before, how do you preserve the space? The prior PRUD and PUD tried to cluster and preserve, but those have already changed. Requests have come forward to amend PRUDs, there was an attempt to put conservation easements, but they were very rarely done. Down the road, how can you assure me, the public, that the space you preserved isn't now fair game to build on? In the past roads, the clustering led to roads not being built wide enough, and the county's left dealing with the issues arising from that, so are they public or private roads, and are you going to allow them to go against the prescribed road conditions? How will you include amenities? We had a formula in the PUD that we followed, and then developers came forward with complaints that we were taking from them, and that formula went away. Pocket parks in neighborhoods are the county's responsibility to maintain, but only the neighborhoods that have the pocket parks in them benefit from amenity, because the people living next to them don't want you to put anything on that that's going to bring other people into the neighborhood. that's gonna bring other people into the neighborhood. Philosophically, it sounds great, but the implementation brings a different reality. Trails were negotiated, but adjacent homeowners came forward and complained about the trails and had them removed by petitioning the county council. Some of the promises are only as good for the time a commissioner sits in office. The next commission can make changes. How can you guarantee this won't happen? How often have you considered ordinance changes or development agreement amendments right here? Years ago, I asked about perpetuity. I asked the planner how she could assure me of that, and I was a citizen then. That encouraged me to run for office. She couldn't. How do you bind a future commission from making changes? I don't have the answers. I'm just a concerned citizen, but even if my words fall on deaf ears, at least I voiced my concerns, and I hope your discussions and the commission's discussions will lead to a better tool. I've taken the planning classes, and I know what people think is good planning, but without some sort of reassurance that means something, that has teeth, I don't see this being good preservation planning. And finally, I don't think the general public has any notion of what this ordinance is or how it may impact their future, and that's why you don't see a lot of people here, and I'm really worried about that. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay.
Hey, Garrett.
Yeah.
Could you help us for the next meeting, understand the reality of being able to ask for land to be preserved in, like.
Perpetuity.
In perpetuity?
Well, I would say it's impossible, because the Utah Constitution sets up a legislative body, an executive body, and a judiciary. They set up counties that they delegate authority to, so the people, you know, the people delegate authority to the state, the state delegates it to the county, and we can't bind future planning commissions or commissions. And there's a danger to that, because different people come in, right, and different ideas will come. But you also wouldn't want to have someone who just wants to build Park City here and then bind the county in perpetuity as well. Does that make sense? It's a two-edged sword. And so, you, you can't bind it either way. That's why we have the system that we do. It's a representative form of government, and.
But you can make it arduous or difficult to change.
You could.
I'm sorry, I agree, you can't.
But I'm just saying, if you try to make something in perpetuity, it'd be struck down by the courts, to something that's not constitutional.
Could you get us some ideas on, if we're setting aside all this open space, the mindset, I think of everybody on here, I'd go on and speak for anyone, but I think the general consensus is, yeah, if we do clustering, it's to make sure that this other land stays open forever, hopefully. Could you get us some ideas on how to go about setting that up?
There is the third party. There's Utah Land Trust, Wendy Fisher. And I, I think that's a possibility, because then it's not under the control of the county.
Yeah. I mean, there, there could be other options. I'm not aware, but I can ask around. I think your best resource for this discussion is probably Josh, just because of his experience and knowledge. I'm, I'm just here more for, okay, if there's a co, you know.
How about you and Josh get together? What is, if we decided to go forward on this, what is the way that makes it most difficult for people to change that doesn't violate the Constitution?
Because I think there's a parcel that did put a conservation easement on McFarland down in East Canyon, and it was a third party, I think it was Utah Land Trust, and I think it is.
Yeah, so if you have any contacts or people that you think are familiar with that, then, you know, not that you're ever in the building, but if you ever come to the building, swing by my office.
I will.
How to go about that?
The adoption of ordinances binds the county, I mean, if, if the.
Until we adopt a new ordinance, though.
Till we get a new ordinance.
Well, that's true, but there's a legislative process. For instance, if you rezon, adopt a rezoning, you don't just adopt an ordinance that says, okay, it's your, I don't know, the property owner has to, the county could, but you're gonna get sued if you do. The property owner has to bring forward a request to rezone it. In this case, if the zone is PC zoning district, then they have to go through the PC zoning district ordinance to amend it. And if, in your review of that, they were given certain increases in development that they would never have gotten going through the normal zoning district, that will be within the minutes, it'll be within the record of previous planning commission and county commission. And it will be shown in the adopted ordinance, which includes all the preliminary documents, including the conceptual film of land, which will outline the required open space that is to remain open. So, with all of that information that's adopted as one package going forward, that's your best bet to preserve that open space plan, regardless of whether you can require it in perpetuity or not, because they would have to go back and convince the planning commission, county commission, whoever's sitting up there, whether it's you or somebody else, that they didn't receive additional dispensations of entitlements with their previous rezoning case, in order to reap and in order to develop that open space that was preserved. If it states clearly on there, you know, number of units and in the, in the staff reports and everything, it talks about what's being provided additionally on top of what they normally would have, then I think it'll be pretty clear to whoever's sitting on the boards that that land, the development potential of that open space was transferred into a smaller area, and it should be preserved.
I think we're all just trying to figure out what are our options for making it as difficult to change their mind in the future as possible, without violating the Constitution.
Is that the most difficult?
If you have required them to submit all the preliminary documents up front as part of the ordinance, including green, drainage, architectural design, conceptual drawings, and everything else that's listed there, and they have to resubmit those 20 years from now, um, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's, it's a lot of money. It would be very arduous to amend a PC zoning district that's adopted. But I just don't see that happening, but, you know, there might be somebody out there that would try.
Rezone to another zone.
Yeah, that's just what they'll do. They'll just change the PC zone, do away with it, and create something else.
So, we'll, I'll do some research. We'll look at something.
For whatever it's worth, I remember.
You're right. Thank you. We're not out of public hearing. Most need to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Member Stevens.
I'll second it.
Second. By Member Little, all in favor?
Aye.
Repose. Thank you. But, yes, some good questions, good things to work through.
Whatever it's worth, I remember defending this before, I'm sure you do as well. Um, it, this is not a popular, and I guess my question is, is the Morgan County going to propose clustering ordinance? Is that what we're saying?
No, this would allow it.
This would allow it.
Would allow it, but do we have a clustering ordinance that defines that? We don't, do we? So, my question is, are we gonna bring one forward?
Well, we can add a definition as part of this X amount that defines clustering. I don't think we technically need separate clustering ordinance, because this would allow them to do it.
But that's what I'm saying, there is not, there's no documentation requiring people to cluster at this point in time.
No, the intent of this zoning district is to give the developer the opportunity to write their own zoning ordinance for their property.
Right.
And then we would enforce their zoning ordinance that they've attached to their property to give them maximum flexibility, but to give us maximum control.
That's, I guess my question to you, Josh, is without language in there saying that this is what we want, then it becomes a matter of whatever commissioner decides at that point in time. They're not required to say X amount is left out here, if there's no documentation saying that, right?
I think if you wanna add sections in there that define the minimum threshold of what they have to provide, I, I think that would be a great idea. I just think if, if we're gonna define everything for the developer, then it defeats the purpose of the PC zoning district.
It does. I agree with that, but I'm saying back to you that if they don't wanna apply under what we're suggesting would be the optimum thing for the county, they don't have to apply underneath that. They can apply for some other.
That's true. We have other zoning districts that are clearly defined, the minimum standards they have to meet.
So, that's why I'm saying back to you is clustering would be my preferred thing, even though it's not very popular.
No, he's, he's, kind of the discussion we've had, to have another ordinance, it's just, they just want to cluster and not go through all this, and not have a lot of mixed uses and that.
Yeah, if you wanna propose that, too, we can, we can bring another X number for just that.
Well, that's it. I don't wanna, I'm, it's a question for the commission, man.
I think the issue with the PRUD was, the PRUD was not reflected on the zoning map. And so, it was really hard to, it's really hard for me to find which properties are affected by a PRUD. The only way I, I know is if somebody tells me forward, I somehow come across the plaque that says PRUD on the top. That's the only way right now. And if I don't know there's a PRUD there, and somebody wants to amend the zoning, or amend it, or sell off open space or whatever, it's really hard for me to then enforce it.
So, I guess that's my question back to the commission, is if we, depending on what we say, what the commission obviously adopts, if you've got a five-acre zone to a 200-acre zone, whatever they've got, are we saying they have the right to apply for development under any of these chapters that we've already defined? Commercial buffer, neighborhood, commercial, they can apply to any of those.
Right.
So, when we're talking about clustering, that's not the law of the county, it's just another option.
We have to put together something that defines clustering if they want to use that going forward without a PC zoning district.
I guess that's my point, so, thank you.
Okay. So, I think we're done with business and staff questions.
Yeah, we don't have anything else. If you wanna make a motion to continue it, so that we can bring it back.
Okay.
To continue our discussion.
Is that for our next meeting?
Uh huh.
Or was, the next one I thought was gonna be a big one.
It's a big one.
No, um, the next one is just one item.
So, it'd be appropriate then, or?
Yeah, if you wanna bring it back to the next meeting, that'd be fine.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Uh, actually, if we did that, all notifications for that would have to go out tomorrow or Friday or Monday, perhaps the latest, and Monday's a holiday.
Well, we're just postponing it, so we don't have free notice.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, continue to adjourn. Thanks.
We need to postpone.
What's the date?
Uh, it's June 8th, isn't it?
I make a motion. Do we postpone it? Is that the word?
Continue it.
Continue it to the June 8th meeting.
Motion by Member Stevens. I have a second.
A second.
I'll give it to Member Miller for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Minutes. If anyone has, everything, okay, so a motion then?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Stevens, second by Member Little, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So moved.
Motion adjourned by Member Stevens.
Second.
Oh, second by Member Miller, all in favor?
Aye.